We'll call our July the 12th meeting to order.
Sorry, you scared Tim of that.
Attention. Attention. We thank everyone for coming to our meeting today. We appreciate you. Some of you are employees and some of you are not, but whoever we can get to come in and see what's going on in our county. You know, word spreads real fast and we want to be doing the right thing. Let us all bow our heads while we have a word of prayer. Our kind gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and we thank you for your blessings. We thank you, Lord, for watching over each and every one. And, Lord, we pray that you would guide us in this meeting. Let us do the things for our county that is important. And, Lord, we thank you that we have such a good county to work in. And go with us now. Be with Tim and his family, Lord, that lost their dad. We pray, Lord, that you just fill that empty spot in Jesus' precious name. Amen. Let's all stand and say our prayers to our plight. Uh, Tim, would you lead it?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll move right along with our agenda. Three point two A, Proclaimations and Awards. And I don't think we, do we have anything?
Yeah.
Oh, Mr. Lee Buchanan, I forgot you. Come right up front.
Yes, sir. It's me. Thank you for having me, commissioners. The deputy that the sheriff and I want to give an award to today needs no introduction, but let me tell you a little bit about him. This deputy has over 28 years of law enforcement experience, most of it with Avery County, some with DOC. This guy sends out Bible scriptures every single day. Good motivational, when I told his wife that he sent me a Bible verse on my phone every day, she said, "I believe he sends most of Avery County a Bible verse every day." I don't know how long he sits and sends out Bible verses to people, but first thing in the morning, y'all can imagine what that means to a deputy sheriff getting a motivational Bible verse from another deputy every morning. He starts a prayer chain and actually prays for every deputy in this community. He'll pray for anybody. All you gotta do is call and tell him and he will stop and pray with you. Everybody knows it's John Hicks. John Hicks is a great coworker. He's a great deputy for Avery County, but most of all, he's a great friend. The award that the sheriff wants to give him today is a couple of years ago, right before COVID, John decided that he wanted to try to teach DARE. Now, DARE school is a two-week school. The only other school that's probably as hard as DARE school is instructor school. I forget the ratio of the fail rate in DARE school, but I believe it's half. Half the class here who fails DARE school. John went those two weeks away from his family, completed DARE school, and he came back. And immediately when he started teaching DARE, COVID hit. So then John had to learn how to do something called Zoom. And he absolutely loved it. Like the rest of us, but Don, John taught DARE on Zoom to kids. We finally completed a DARE class here recently. Rearside Elementary School was the first class and then Newland Elementary School was the second one. And the best that we can tell, this is the first class in Avery County to graduate DARE in over 20 years. Other than that, all the funding for the program mostly comes from John listing people in the community for the program. The first year, I think John got money from DARE because he done so well in school. The second year, he got money from different people to actually continue the program. And for that, the sheriff gives him every bit of our thanks for that. I just want to say a couple of things about John. Number one, John is a servant. He is a servant to this county, but he's a servant to the citizens of this county. And no deputy pulls the standards of being a servant any better than John Hicks. But the one thing you gotta understand about John is change bothers him and he worries about stuff just a little bit. So, his daughter and the kids are dying. He tends to worry about stuff just a little bit. So, the DARE school had him stressed really bad because he's had to get up and speak in front of people and do stuff on a computer, PowerPoint presentations, stuff like that. He'd never done them before. We had no idea when that was going on that we were going to be shutting everything down and have COVID. When that happened, he finished it out. Now, a couple of little known facts. Lee hit on the fact that DARE has not been taught in 20 years. Your dad's the one that started the DARE program in Avery County. He was the first sheriff to ever do DARE. And then it kind of faded away and it was, it took a while to get things going back and to do things. And John volunteered to do that. We have another person in the DARE instructor school right now. And hopefully, he'll be able to help John next year. Some of them will hit all the schools. And our goal is to have every elementary school have a DARE program going on actively within it, to educate students about the dangers of drugs and alcohol, bad decisions. Those are the things that we want to do. Prevention, like anything else, whether it be for the opioids, drug things, domestic violence animals, whatever you want to talk about, having that education component to teach people the things that they need to stay away from is going to be the critical first step in anything, is to try to prevent it to begin with. And so, John, come up here, please. No, go ahead. We'd like to present you with this. And Lee, if you'll read it. Presented to John Hicks for implementing the DARE program in Avery County schools for the first time in 20 years. Thank you. And if y'all don't care, I'd like to say one more thing. Couple of years ago, we asked for officers, for deputies to be in the school. This is who we got mentoring our children in our school. And I can't think of a better person to have there than for kids to look up to John Hicks.
I think a mentor may.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank you. Once you're in law enforcement, it's like it just spreads from family to family. His son now is in Madawick County, working as a deputy to him. Three point two B, Public Comments. I believe Mr. John Millen wanted to speak.
Thank you. I'll try to be brief. I'd like to say hi to all our commissioners. Thank you for the work y'all do and hi to all our visitors here. And while the chief's here, I had something to comment on his corner. But as a citizen of this county and as a retired school resource officer and former DARE officer, I'd like to thank the Sheriff's Department for having a robust DARE program that's backed and a really good SRO program. We've got fine deputies mentoring our kids and keeping our schools safe. And it means a lot to me and I know it means a lot to the community. I appreciate all the Sheriff's Department does. Thank you, chief. Here is your coroner. I kind of just took ownership of this situation. We've got to recognize and follow officers. I think y'all are aware of it. And I appreciate the patience and time you all put into this. Every time we've kind of moved towards wanting to get something done, we've had a disease outbreak or something crazy happens. We're finally getting back on reasonably solid setting where I felt comfortable in coming up with a public comment right now and asking. Public may not be aware of it, but we have had two Elk Park police officers, one back before the county was a county, when it was Mitchell County, an Avery County firefighter, a correctional officer, a state trooper, five deputies and a constable killed in the line of duty here in Avery County over the years. And I know the Hicks family, as we recognize them, how much you all have contributed and the price you've paid in the loss of our dear friend Glenn Hicks a number of years ago. We've recognized him. There are some other officers who have immediate families still surviving. And you all, I think everybody here knows Mr. Gerald Jones at Jones Carpet. Mr. Jones's father, Deputy Jones, was killed in the line of duty in 1939 on just outside Roaring Creek. And he had asked that his father be recognized. And I think what we finally came up with, the concerns were, do we reach out to somebody? And there could be some families that it might upset them to remind them of this, to reach out to them. How do we pay for all this? And I think what everybody has kind of mentioned, and I know there's no formal action like yet, but maybe we could consider this over the next 30 days and then I could come back as an agenda item, is that we would agree to consider recognizing fallen officers as surviving family members come forward. And I can state for the record for the board that Mr. Jones has asked that his father be duly recognized. And I think that would be highly appropriate. Two ways to do this. One would be to ask the district engineer for a variance if we could erect our own sign, a local business. It's going out here on Smoky Strait. Could do it a lot cheaper. I spoke to the highway patrol. They have a fallen trooper who is from outside but near this county. So, the issue would be, does his family want something done? And would it be done in their county or it happened here? So, there's all sorts of ways of reaching out. But right now, we have one family that wants something done about this. And we could perhaps do it for less cost if we could get DOT to approve it through a local vendor. Or it takes about $1,200 through the state. Right now, there is just the one. And I realize others could come forward, but nine or 10 people in the big scope of things over a period of time would not bankrupt the county. And I'm pretty confident not everyone is going to want that done. I know one of the fallen public safety personnel is part of my wife's family and they had said that they appreciate it, but they're not interested. So, I would ask the board to please consider that we could do this. What he had asked was that a sign be erected similar to what we did for Glenn at the bridge at Powdermill, just below Roaring Creek on both sides of it, recognize his father, Deputy Jones, who was killed in the line of duty while his wife was pregnant with Mr. Jones. And she worked very hard over the years to keep her many children when the county tried to take them away and she succeeded. So, it's a heartwarming and heartbreaking story at the same time. So, I'd ask that you all please recognize that. And I thank you for all your doing as coroner and citizen. And I'd like to thank law enforcement. And I'd also, again, I'd like to offer my condolences to Mr. Phillips and I don't know if Frig is still here and the rest of the Phillips family for the loss of his father, former Sheriff Clinton Phillips. So, that's all I had. Thank you very much.
My dear John. All right, we'll move right along to three point C, Board of Apparties. And we have Avery County Economic Development Advisory Committee. We have two applications. Gerald?
No, we just have one.
One application?
One vacancy and one application.
Okay. Jerry T. Moody and...
Move to a point.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to appoint. We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, three point two two, Appointment of Tax Collector. Mr. Bruce Daniels has been our tax collector and every two years, he comes up. And so, it's time to reappoint our tax collector.
Anybody else interested for you? I'd like to let it reappoint. Please.
All right, we have a motion on the floor and a second to reappoint Mr. Bruce Daniels.
Let's say that we're adopting this resolution.
I'd like to adopt this resolution to appoint Bruce Daniels.
Okay. We'll get this resolution in there then. Do I hear, do you want it read?
Which is read it if you want.
Go ahead.
Whereas the Avery County Tax Collector serves a two-year term appointed in the odd number of years. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners previously indicated that it desires a tax collector and tax administrator to be consolidated into the same individual. And whereas the Board last appointed Bruce Daniels as tax administrator in July 2019, and the Board desires to appoint said individual to the combined office of tax administrator and tax collector. And whereas the Board hereby pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 105349, appoints Bruce Daniels as tax collector with such term set to expire 1 July 2023, and reaffirm his appointment as tax administrator, and now therefore be it resolved at the Avery County Board of Commissioners meeting in regular session on the 12th day of July 2021 pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 105349, appoints Bruce Daniels as tax collector effective 1 July 2021. The Board of Commissioners further authorizes the chair to comment this resolution.
All right, we've heard the resolution read and I believe we've got the motion on the floor and a second. All in favor of appointing Mr. Bruce Daniels, say aye.
Aye.
I was a little worried with the sheriff procedure I'm going to be writing now.
Now Bruce, I found somebody that can read as fast as you can and she never has.
But much more eloquent.
Yeah. All right, we'll move right along to three point three, Review of Application for Avery County Airport Authority. We do have two people that has put in an application, Dempsey Clark and Mr. John D. Harris Jr.
And both of these are on the airport authority now. These are two vacancies. And both of these are wanting to be reappointed to the board. So, we can review these at a time and then appoint at the next meeting.
All right. So, we'll review and, and Mr. Dempsey Clark, I noticed in our agenda, had circled the wrong place that he wanted to be in. I showed it to Cindy and we corrected it. He put on for Avery County Economic Development Committee and it was Avery Airport Authority. All right, we'll move right along to three point two D.
Okay, so we'll have to wait on that?
That comes out at four o'clock, so we'll move.
But we can continue on if you want to.
You want to try to do three point three A?
Yes.
All right, A Resolution to Purchase the Realty Property. Michelle, tell us a little bit about that.
This is a resolution to authorize the purchase of real property. And this is the property that's owned by the hospital system that's located back here in the town of Newland. So, just for the board's reference, there's a copy of the deed in the agenda packet, a copy of the listing and a copy of the purchase agreement. The proposed purchase price is $225,000 and it's a 1.23 acre tract.
And I can read the resolution if you'd like to have it read. Go ahead.
Whereas it being known to the Avery County Board of County Commissioners that certain real property containing approximately 1.23 acres being of record is Book 270, page 1272. A various parcel number 1836, 1951, 6328 is available for purchase. And whereas upon said real property is a building suitable for office space by the county. And whereas the Avery County Board of Commissioners pursuant to NCGS 153A-158 finds that the county is authorized to acquire real property for use by the county and that said purchase is in the best interest of the county. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board authorizes the purchase of that 1.23 acre tract of record in Book 270, page 1272 of the Avery County Registry, amounting to $225,000 plus closing costs. County manager is hereby authorized to execute any and all documents to purchase said property, including but not limited to purchase contract, closing statement, any other related documents adopted this 12th day of July 2021.
All right.
Move to the top.
All right, we have it on the floor to adopt and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And probably everyone knows we just outbroke a building a little bit while we were having to do this. And thankful we found a place for our DSS. All right. All right, Mr. Bruce Daniels, three point three B. I believe you can take care of the rest.
If technology will operate, I assure you there will be a few minutes left over. So, first of all, let me say thank you for your trust in me. And I couldn't do my job without a staff of the best people anywhere around. So, it's not that I'm doing the job, it's that they are and they deserve more of the recognition than me. So, but thank you for your trust in me. For your approval, I'll submit the collections totals for the month of June at $90,732.18.
All right, we have a motion to approve and it's second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And as you can see, looking at the revaluation sales, we just found some rural acreage across the county there. Sales are still very, very solid for June of 2021. We had 116 sales and we're at 67% of assessed ratio. Last year, we only had 69 sales and we're at 80%. So, that's again showing that the purchase prices are still rising and that our revaluation is coming at the proper time. So, everything going there, the purchase prices have gone up enough to where the first two years of work during our revaluation are being kind of thrown out the window. So, here we are. And if you'll bear with me while I get this going, I've got the fiscal year report for your approval and perusal. See if I can... Do that. That's what I'm going to do. And so, what we have here for, this is the 2021 fiscal report. As you can see, our total original levy that we started out with is $21,492,629.26. Added into that was a total of $305,015.32 of discoveries. Most of that is your utilities and information the state of North Carolina hands to us in September. We do occasionally find some other properties that we didn't get split. We have to do a bill, something along those lines. But the majority of your discoveries happens to come from utilities published to us in September by the state of North Carolina, once bills are actually already gone out. Take away from that, we had $13,108.57 in releases for a total levy for 2020 taxes, excuse the typo, of $21,784,536.1 cent. We all important in one cent. So, this slide is just simply showing more of the same. It's showing what we have done for our collection rates. And actually, for whatever reason, this seems to be the wrong one. Caleb, let me see this. So, I'll actually ignore this because for whatever reason, I apparently saved the wrong slide when I did this. So, let me actually give you the correct numbers and I'll back up a little bit. So, our total levy, I don't know, it's the same one. Okay, we're good. I just have the wrong dates. So, our collection total, our collection rate's at 98.38% for where we're at right now, which compared to years previous is actually quite good for where we need to be because at this same point in time for 2019 bills, we were only at 97.76%. So, we're up, you know, close to a percent in our collection rate year-to-date 2020 versus 2019. As usual, it's all real and personal property for what we're doing right now. Our motor vehicle bills were taken over by the state in 2013. So, those still show in our 10-year numbers. They're actually going to be start phasing out once we reach 2023 and beyond. The motor vehicle bills that are still in the system will be going out. We do occasionally have someone coming in to pay those, but it's pretty rare. As you can see, our 10-year total levy is $203,187,391.57, of which our collection rate is 99.51%. So, it's really hard to beat those numbers, in my opinion. You can look at the real and personal property breakdowns versus the motor vehicle breakdowns. Obviously, that motor vehicle breakdown percentage is going to be a lot less just simply because those are probably at this point vehicles that are no longer on the road, is going to be my guess. So, the 99.56 is the real property that's out there and it, and what has been collected. So, a breakdown of what we've got for payment agreements, 2020 only, we have $2,535.57 and a 10-year total of $4,935.98. These are people that have come in. They've had back taxes and they've essentially just come in and given us, we'll pay you X amount per month until we get paid off. So, that's really a good number to have out there. Our bankruptcy number has gone up a little bit, $6,355.96 for 2020 and a 10-year total of $11,594.51. This is money that we can't touch until such time as the bankruptcy has been resolved. Once that Chapter 11, Chapter 7, whatever it may be, is over, then we can start a collection process on it if it needs to. If the bankruptcy proceedings don't indicate that we get paid, then we can go after it another way. And attorney pursuits for 2020 is a really good number. We only have $3,720.58 and our 10-year total is $181,945.50. So, all being told, in my opinion, we're in really good shape and all of our figures, all of our outstanding monies, all of our collections, we're in really good shape, in my opinion, for the fiscal year. Any questions or comments, concerns on the money?
As the vehicular money comes in, is it law? They have collections as it's processed?
As it's processed, it's putting in, hasn't a motor vehicle bill? We've had someone who's had a vehicle off of the road for repairs or whatever the case is since that. You know, you've got an older vehicle, it's just you've not had tag. Maybe you made it a farm vehicle, you're selling it to put it back on the road. If they haven't paid those taxes from 2013, they'll come to us. But anything after 2014 or from 2014 forward, it would be your tax and tag together that you do at the tag office. So, but it does come in and we do log it in as a motor vehicle bill if we do have something come in. Probably had maybe two of those last year, in my memory. So, it hasn't been a great deal. But like I say, you know, if someone hasn't had a tag on a vehicle in eight years now, chances are solid they're not going to.
So, this speaks a lot about our taxpayers too. Avery County has good taxpayers.
Really and truly, especially the collection percentage, in my opinion, for 2020, it speaks volumes for the people here that, you know, it's been a most unusual year for everyone involved. But yet, our collection percentage this year is as high as it's ever been. When people have had every reason in the world to say, "Well, I'll put my taxes off just a little bit." They've still been paid and we're in great shape like that. So, no, as Mr. Vance says, it speaks very highly of just the people, the tax base of Avery County that we are in the shape that we are. Well, thank you very much for your time. I'll see if I can figure out how to shut this off and go from there. I think that's done, so. All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Bruce, I've had a lot of people say, "Well, the first thing I've done with my stimulus check was go pay my taxes."
And we have had a lot. Like I said, that's just, that speaks to just solid class of people, really truly does.
Prefer hospitals or novel content?
It really doesn't happen anymore, to be honest. So, what I'm... It really doesn't happen anymore, Mr. Vance, so what a break in us.
Something, of course.
I can take the back here and play for that time. Sorry, Tim.
Somebody has a different thing for.
Okay, you're good, it's four o'clock.
All right. Uh, three point two D, our legislative hearing for solid soil erosion and sediment control ordinance.
So we need a motion.
To go into the meeting. I hear a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. All approved, say aye.
Aye. I think Michelle's in charge of this, I'm just here to.
I don't know that I'm in charge, but, uh, this is, uh, the last, uh, ordinance that we needed to revise for the one sixty D compliance. And, uh, the planning board had actually gone through this ordinance and made several changes, uh, to make it compliant with the, uh, current state model, uh, that's sent out, uh, to the planning department. Uh, so the board can see from the, uh, uh, document that's in the packet, um, all the strike crews show what's changed and everything. There's, uh, comments and whatnot throughout the document, just so you can see. And, um, so all those changes went through the planning board, and I think they, uh, approved them in March, as I recall. So just asking the board, um, or I guess first, uh, asking the public if there are any questions about, uh, the, uh, changes to the soil, uh, and erosion ordinance? Any comments?
I definitely have comments. On the, uh, section four, scope and, uh, execution, uh, the state did give us the village of Grandfather. It is the one municipality in Avery County that we do cover. And I'd ask at section four, paragraph A, to change or to accept, accept the village of Grandfather, because they are a part of our, our, uh, local government ordinance. Section four, scope and exclusions, okay?
Sorry, but we're the village of Grandfather, right?
We're the village of Grandfather, yeah. The village of Grandfather is, we do their sedimentation oil erosion. It was assigned to us, the state pulled their program, and they gave it to us. And I said, why us? And they said, because you're an African, the devil, and I said, oh. It was one of those things I couldn't say no to, they just said, it's yours. And I said, thank you. Also, uh, I'll call it page twelve. On the design, section six, design standards for steep slopes and hillside development, uh, we placed, uh, at the bottom, it says, okay, we're at, uh, paragraph E, um, sub-paragraph I. It's lines construction with pitch grades greater than equal to fifteen percent slope shall be, shall have the bottoms riprap solid and geotect matting in place. I'd like to have, uh.
You want the word matting in place?
Yes, matting in place, yes ma'am. Matting in place. Okay, and, uh, in the same section, paragraph H, ground cover for steep slopes and hillside development. Uh, I think we've not, uh, I think we need to insert days. Uh, steep slopes are areas within twenty-one calendars, and then it's all strict in following completion. That would be twenty-one calendar days following completion. Is there a man in H? Ground cover for steep.
Make sure that one of the days isn't marked for you.
Yeah, 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 we had two days, one gunning round, yes ma'am. I do not want it. And then, uh, the next section down, seven, uh, seven, erosion and sedimentation control plan. This needs to be consistent with, uh, section six, paragraph H, where it says, section seven, paragraph A, plan submission. The plan shall be submitted in, in phases with no one phase being a greater than, it says ten acres. There needs to be ten acres of, of disturbed area.
Okay, which, which section are you in again?
I'm in section seven.
Yeah, seven, which paragraph?
Uh, uh, paragraph eight, the very, the very first paragraph there. A plan shall be prepared for the land disturbing activity subject to this ordinance whenever the proposed activity will disturb more than one acre on a track. The plan shall, shall, shall be in phases, um, with no one phase being greater than, it says ten acres, and that means it'd be ten acres of disturbed area. And I guess you could put in ground disturbed area or disturbed area. Right, and that's gonna make it consistent with, with phase development. That's, I wish I could have these two earlier, but we've just been too busy, I, I apologize. But, uh, I saw one other typo in there, and I didn't mark it, and I'm not sure what it's, it was an A, it needs to be an A, so.
Okay.
I'm sorry, that's all I have, I'm sorry.
I guess are there any other public comments?
If not, I hear that we go out of our, um, meeting and go back into our regular meeting.
We'll close the public, what is it, what are we doing, public hearing?
Yeah.
Legislative hearing.
Yeah, legislative.
It was legislative hearing.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, so, all right. We have a.
Let's get a word out.
A motion and a second. Everybody agree to close this session and go back to our record.
All right.
All right.
And in light of that, I guess at this time, um, just asking the board to adopt the resolution to amend the Avery County Soil Erosion and Sedimentation Control Ordinance with those changes that, uh, we just went over, uh, with Mr. Burleson in the public, uh, hearing section.
Did you say, uh, you, oh, okay, I'm sorry.
You feel that those changes are substantive enough to return to the planning board? Or would they be comfortable with those changes being presented without, outside of their perusal?
I think that those are just small changes that would not be substantive.
All right, Mr. Tim, this motion on the floor, I hear a second. Mr. Aldridge seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Madam Commissioner, uh, thank you for allowing, uh, this board and the consultants to help us. That was a tremendous help to us and the planning board and, and my department. I just wanna say thank you for that, letting on that action, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Three point three C subdivision approval of Sunset lots at Eagles Nest, S nine three dash S one one seven. Who wants?
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
We've taken time this afternoon, and I think, um, what we have in front of you is pretty, uh, pretty simple tonight, so, um, if you guys got any questions.
Is that first set on the first sheet in our packet? I'm not sure how it's presented on, on your paperwork, if it matches out, but the, uh, the first, uh, plaque there that shows the, let's see, it'd be like ninety-three through one oh, one thirteen maybe, or something like that, uh. Yeah.
Yeah, air's come out, it's legal, but.
Yeah, that's all I'm saying, I figured it'd be different than the, uh, is that a pub development?
Oh, here.
No, sir, major all, not even a lot, well, it's three quarters of an acre, I'm sorry.
Oh, those, those lots don't have a, a, a.
Sign on them.
The signs on them, that's not asking.
Same, same.
All rest of them do, rest of them, you know, part of the.
Y'all need to cover sheet, if you'll flip to the next, it'll give you the acreage.
Okay.
You said ninety-three, ninety-four, correct?
Uh, yeah, first, uh, the.
The, the first, first page is the cover sheet, because I had so many notes and all that kind of stuff. Then went to the actual, last, the track, to the next page.
Yeah, we don't have anything under acre on, you know, this stuff here.
Nope. I submitted you a letter with it, you know, it is off of Townland Road, and that's in, that's in the vicinity of, that's in the vicinity of that thirty thousand gallon self-filling fire department water point, so, uh, that's a.
Yeah, all these lots will be within, every single one of these will be within no more than three quarters of a mile from that new filling, filling tank.
I'm moving through.
I have a second on that.
I'll take it.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Hop, hop up on the soapbox just a minute.
Okay.
Um, I've had, I just wanna say some things for the record. Um, I've had some, some citizens that have approached me about Eagles Nest, and you and I have had this conversation before, and I just wanna go on record and, and speak briefly about our role as county commissioners. Um, and it's one hundred percent not to stop or hinder the free market. Um, some folks have, have expressed concern with changing demographics and things like that, and property values, it's happening. It's happening with or without Eagles Nest, people are gonna move here, people are going to. And it's not our job to go to somebody and say, you can't sell your land. You can't sell your, what you have. And it's certainly not our place as a county government to go to an entity that's creating jobs, creating tax base, and, and really doing a lot of good in the county and doing a lot of good for a lot of families. It is not our place to go to them and say, hey, you need to stop. It's our duty to make sure that we're following the state statutes and that we have the proper infrastructure in place. But, uh, Eagles Nest is creating a whole lot of jobs and prosperity in Avery County. And yes, the demographics are changing, and they're going to continue to change. Um, that's not solely because of Eagles Nest. Um, and, and it's gonna happen with or without, but it's not the role of the county government to stand in the way of a company and, and a development that's, that's creating and feeding a lot of, a lot of kids in this county and a lot of families, uh, and doing a lot of good. It's not our role, and it's not our role to go to, to your neighbors for people that have had concerns about that. It's not our role to say, hey, you can't sell your land. If they wanna sell their land, that's their business. And if Eagles Nest wants to buy it, that's their business too. Our job's just to make sure that we're fulfilling our role in that. So I appreciate what y'all are doing up there. Uh, and I just wanna go on record and say that, 'cause I've, I've certainly had people come to me and say, hey, y'all need to stop this, it's killing my property value, I'm gonna be paying more in taxes. That's not our job, that's not our role as county, as a county government. Our role as county government is to make sure the infrastructure's in place like it needs to be, and that our ordinances are being followed, and that's what we're doing. So I appreciate what y'all are doing, and, uh, if folks have an issue with it, they need to, you know, it's, it's not the county's role to jump in the middle of it. It's just not, that's not the role of government in this country. I'm off my soapbox now, 'cause I've had several people that have approached me about that. But I, I just want you to know that speaking for one commissioner, I appreciate what y'all are doing. I appreciate the people and our citizens that you employ and the tax base that you're creating, because when you're creating tax base like that, it may help the local peoples go down in the future. I mean, that's just the, that's just, that's simple math, and so, thank you.
Appreciate that, Mike, but, um, and I was just saying, you know, we, we, we don't wanna be a hindrance to anybody, we wanna do it the right way, and, uh, you know, we've talked on it many times, so, you know, we're here to do it the right way and try to hopefully be the example of how to do it, 'cause, you know, I don't think there's a way that it's gonna stop in Avery County, and we're definitely gonna be the only ones to develop property in Avery County. So if we can do it the right way and be an example for, uh, future developments, that's what we would, we'd like to do.
I'm not, I'm not sure that people realize this is happening from, you know, from three miles to the top of each mountain. That's what's happening in Avery County right now.
Well, it's been happening for years.
Long time.
It's, it's just kicked into overdrive right now.
It's ain't the first.
So I, I feel like y'all are doing a fine job up there, so.
Appreciate that.
And we're certainly, it's certainly not our, our job as county commissioners to tell somebody they can't sell their property, or tell you that you can't buy it.
And Dirk, in the last meeting we had, you made a comment that you thought the planning board was giving y'all a hard time, and we said we'd looked into it. Well, I've looked into it and talked to people that's on the planning board, and they said they have a job, they have a thing to go by, which Juncy had to have done, and she said sometimes Juncy's come and it's not been completed. It's the only thing that they know, and they're not against it or nothing like that. But now, when you make a promise and say you looked into it, I did.
I do appreciate you looking into it, and, um, I don't know that it's, that usually what's on our checklist is correct. A lot of times they ask for things that are not on the checklist, and that's when we have an issue, when we have something that blindsides us on items that are not on the checklist, you know, um, it can be, it can be little things, but, you know, they'll wanna hold us up for little things. You know, we had like this plaque here per se, and this planning board meeting went very well, but there was one thing on there. There was a section of the old plaque that still had some road running into this one, and on that section, it had already been proved, it didn't say private on this section. Um, and that was a thing they wanted to go back. Now, that's something that's not on our checklist, it wasn't there. So, and there has been times that we've had numerous things, you know, spell check errors, things like that, that they say we're not gonna approve, because we told you last time, if everything's not one hundred percent, we're not even looking at it. So, you know, little things like that, things that we, we normally ask, can we have a, um, approval contingent upon this fixing a spell check error and having Mike look at it? So those are the things, you know, that we, we tend to, but I do appreciate you asking about it, looking at it. The last planning board meeting, I would say, went, is probably as good as one that we've had in the last five years. So it was, it was very good, the last meeting we had, uh, it was in. Um, I do appreciate, uh, also the county making that a paid position. I know it's not a whole lot of pay, but it being a paid position now for the board members, so that if we have more than a few things on the agenda, that it doesn't get cut off at a set time, um, so we do appreciate that too.
And I'm sure that Tommy knows every one of them, check marks has to be checked, right, Tom?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
All right.
Me and Mike and everybody, yes.
Yes. But we want it to go smooth.
What brings it?
Uh, my comment is I think we have some of the greatest development in Avery County. We're one of the most restrictive counties in the state. We require, we've been talking around now, the, the next one will be a HUD. So there'll be, uh, five, uh, a half, five tenths of an acre for every lot that's under the point seven five. There'll have to be a half acre of green space. Avery County, we, we've set the mark, I mean, we're, we're ahead of everybody in, in, in doing that. And what's, what we're gonna do is, again, I'm saving soapbox, as I'm on, like, is we have to save trees and green spaces. These trees fit to feed our system, they feed our, our water system, and, and that's, and, and what they're doing up there, they're, they're doing forestry management and all that kinda good stuff. So I, I mean, uh, we, we have high quality development in Avery County. So, I mean, as Dennis was saying, it's, it's, it's here, it's two thousand twenty-one each year.
Yeah, I echo that, and I appreciate, appreciate you saying that. It just, I, I feel like there, there's some folks that want the county to be involved in, in that private business transaction that takes place with purchasing land and that kind of thing. It's not the role of government, um, it's just not. Um, we don't have the authority to do that, and, and there are all kinds of philosophical debates that can be had, but legally, county is not gonna step in, and, you know, it's not the role of the county commissioners to step in to private real estate transactions.
And I appreciate the, you know, the forestry management and the green space stuff, that's, I think that's important, and I, and I appreciate that the editor taking the decision. We, we, like I say, we wanna be a, an example, and we try our best to be, and, uh, the green space stuff, uh, being our next approval, we're fixing to go before the planning board on that, and, uh, a HUD, basically, what we do is when it goes under that, we have to cut out so much green space that's attached to that area, so that'll be our next one that you guys get to see, but it'll have a, a acre or about eight acres of green space on that particular plaque that we're bringing next time. And that is land that could be developed, it is not land, it's not developable land, but it is part of stuff that we're keeping green on land.
Yeah, but when it, when it gets marked green space, there's no development.
Yep.
And we've run into that before, yeah. If they wanna be technical, they can put common space on it, and they can still develop it. But when it gets earmarked green space, it's, it's, it's forestry land. It's, 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 it's dead to development. And that's, and I, that's awesome. I mean, I, like I say, Avery County is, we're, we're, we're a leader in the state. We have the lowest density rates of any county in the state. And, again, it's because of people, Rachel Deal, and Jim Perry, and Joe Perry, and, uh, Anzi Lacy, Anzi Lacy put that in the notes, it's the people that mentored me in the nineties.
All right.
Since we're pontificating, I'll go into fray. Uh, I think everyone, I've been concerned, and rightly so, in voice, concerned over some of the, uh, ratios and the way things have been presented, and some folks represent, you have the general public, that I am wanting to shut down the development, and that is certainly not the case, and that came from a, uh, a non-present, uh, voice of a conversation, and we'll not go into that. But it is important, I think, that we realize that, yes, it is not our role to be involved in transactions and private businesses, but it is our role to look twenty years, thirty years down the road and begin to try to understand what's gonna happen. And you cannot go thirty years down the road and go, "Boy, we should have done this." And that's all that I'm saying that we need to be conscious of, is where our vision needs to be far greater than what's happening right now. And if it's not, then we're going to be in a situation that our children are gonna go back and not say kind things about us. And that's my concern, and that's what I'm saying. I'm not saying that we should not have development, certainly we should. Uh, the whole platform I ran for this office was, you know, protecting heritage and creating opportunities, and it's, it has to go together, and it is a changing world, we understand that. But the, uh, the application of statutes and ordinances, um, in a way that is applied regardless of size, regardless of, of, uh, development of individuals involved, um, is so critical to our going forward, and the application of those things in a way that we can look and see what's gonna be at the other end of this. And, um, we, we, it's evident that things are coming, and if, just, one of the things that the commission is really striving to do is to, and after everybody, I get asked about, uh, every other day, like everyone else on this board, about, uh, technology and broadband and internet, and there's a lot of the areas of our county that limit, right now, development is limited because of that. And if we are able to, uh, enhance that, and that's what we're striving to do every day, and to increase that reach, then that's gonna open up a lot of areas for development. And, uh, so if we, we look at it in terms of the responsibility that we have, try to look ahead and say, "Okay, what's gonna happen? When this goes, when that goes, when this event happens, that's a part of the planning process that we're, we have to be aware of." It's not trying to stop anything, it is merely trying to be aware and to understand what's ahead of us, and try to make plans and, uh, set, uh, levels in development to where we will, you know, thirty years from now, we'll be able to, while we're going out. And that's the only issue that we have, certainly not, like Blake said, it's not to be involved in, you know, saying, "Don't do this and don't do that," that's the whole free market thing. But we do have responsibility to be aware of, of the cumulative effort of everything that's here, and be aware of that, so that we're not surprised in the future.
All right. We have any more comments? If not, do I hear a motion that we approve the Sunday...
We already have it.
Okay. All right. Okay. All right, we'll move. Let me sign it.
I need a little black Sharpie, fine point, I think, bring it, do you read one there?
I guess it's one.
I think it's just...
Thank you very much.
I'm good, buddy, you go ahead.
Have my map back to put in my stuff.
Yes, my own.
Bye.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We thank each one of y'all.
Thank you. Three point four A, our county commissioner, county manager's on vacation today.
Hang on just a minute, on that three point three D, let's, um, have a motion to table that until the August meeting.
Yeah.
Move that we table the Avery County nine eleven communication advisory committee into a August meeting.
We were working on that, but we came into a few little things that we thought that's fixed, and, so, that we can, that we get it right with our board policy, so we need to wait until, uh, August to do that.
All in favor of tabling the Avery County nine eleven communication advisory committee say aye.
All right. Three point four, uh, we could let Cindy do updates, if she's got any.
I'll have the updates, but in your agenda consent items, there are a few things that, um, one of them is the Juvenile Prevention Council county plan for twenty-one, twenty-two. That's something that we do every year, that's always sitting in our agenda consent items for consensus, and then your planning board, um, minutes are in there. A report from the Department of Social Services is in there, and I'm sure y'all have read all of that. And then in our informational items is this fall farm tour, which is October fourteenth, which is when we're gonna be going to the NCACC, and I think it happens every year at the same time that we, um, that, um, they have that. And then, there was a letter in here, um, that the county manager had sent from the county and in support of WHAMMY, and, uh, for their application for the housing preservation grant from the US Department of Agriculture, the Rural Development Division. So, that's just some things in there. Although, I don't have anything, I know that, um, Philip and Dennis went to a broadband some, something.
It was the Appalachian Regional Commission.
Yes.
The, I, we had, uh, the BASS...
Federal Culture.
Federal Culture, I was trying to think of her title, uh, uh, that, from the ARC, Appalachian Regional Commission, uh, which is the funding source for the two, or the, a, a previous broadband grant and the one that we are in the midst of beginning even now. And this is, we, uh, we met with them in the Little Falls area, uh, discussing the impact that, that expansion had on the, on businesses and homes in that area, and then met with them also at Crossnor, uh, for the town of Crossnor, where, uh, they signed on for funding, or as a component of the funding, to assist in the renovation of their, uh, sewer system in the town of Crossnor. So, the Appalachian Regional Commission does a tremendous amount of work over a broad, a huge area, it's thirteen states, I think it is, or something like that, the whole Appalachian mountain range, and, uh, was very pleased that they were able to come and meet with some folks locally here and bring, uh, a lot of the people from the county offices, I mean, the state offices as well, so it was a very productive and beneficial meeting for the work that they're doing. And, and a shout out also in that to Phil True and the, and the High Country Council governments, uh, they were implement, uh, very instrumental in both the writing and the, uh, implementation of, uh, those grants, to, and with the help of the Avery Chan, Avery County Chamber of Commerce.
Now, Cindy, when is the meeting at least McCray College in Warren?
I think that's the twenty...
In Dudley, Green is gonna be there.
Twenty-third, yeah. At six, six-thirty, yes.
All right.
Be Warren Daniel in Dudley Green. Yeah. Six-thirty.
All right. So, that kindly got us updated on our scene items and things that's going on. We appreciate Dennis and Philip going down and listening, bringing it back to us. Sometimes we all can't go at the same time, and we're not supposed to have three, so we kindly separated a little bit. All right. Three point four B, our finance officers report, Caleb.
I think you're trying to set a record every month.
It's getting a little long.
It sure looks that way, doesn't it? When I come very good news first.
All right.
So, uh, some information that, uh, of things that transpired between our last meeting and the end of the fiscal year, some of those budget amendments we did, we had some revenue come in to help to offset some of that. We had an insurance check, uh, for an amount of thirteen thousand four hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fifty-eight cents, uh, to offset some of our repairs and maintenance budget amendments that we did. And we also received some more money from FEMA to offset some of the FEMA costs, and that was, uh, that come on June twenty-third, eighteen thousand four hundred and seventy-one dollars and ninety cents. And also, just today, Dennis Holling, our IT director, uh, we sat down virtually with three representatives from NCT, and we looked over all the invoices and, uh, tried to get some of those costs down, and, and we found a couple billing errors that are going to be rectified, and we are going to be credited for as long as we have been paying some unnecessary charges. And also, uh, they're gonna be looking over some different services that we can, uh, maybe, services that we are signed up for, but maybe we don't utilize like we really should, and maybe there's an alternative to drive some more of those costs down. So, they're supposed to be contacting us again, we'll have another discussion, and we'll hopefully get some, some of the costs down. We want to be good stewards of the county's money. Um, and I have a few items here, so from the good news to the also good news. Uh, item number one, the Department of Central Dispatch has restructured, uh, restructured their department in a way that places additional duties and responsibilities on shift supervisors to compensate for the increased workload, a budget adjustment will need to be made. Request the board approve the following budget amendment to debit salaries dispatchers, general fund line item eighty-two-hundred dot zero-two-one-zero, an amount of five thousand dollars, to debit FICA, general fund line item eighty-two-hundred dot zero-five-hundred, an amount of four hundred dollars, uh, to debit retirement, general fund line item eighty-two-hundred dot zero-six-hundred, an amount of six hundred dollars, debit, uh, communications, 401K law, general fund line item eighty-two-hundred dot zero-eight-hundred, an amount of two hundred dollars, and to credit fund balance appropriated, general fund line item thirty-nine-ninety, an amount of six thousand two hundred dollars.
All right. Do I hear a motion that the board approves the following budget amendment?
Moves it up.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number two, the Department of Central Dispatch needs additional money budgeted due to increased expenses for uniforms and training. Request the board adopt the following budget amendment to debit training, general fund line item eighty-two-hundred dot one thousand, an amount of twenty-five-hundred dollars, debit uniform shirts, general fund line item eighty-two-hundred dot thirty-six-hundred, an amount of twelve hundred dollars, and to credit fund balance appropriated, general fund line item thirty-nine-ninety, an amount of three thousand seven hundred dollars.
That's approved.
All right. Do I, all right, we have a motion on the floor to approve the budget amendment of three thousand seven hundred dollars. All in favor, say aye.
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 Item number three, in the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, the Sheriff's Department was awarded the Operation Pocket Change Grant, an amount of two thousand five hundred dollars, to fund expenses related to the DARE program. These funds were not spent, and the department has requested that they be rolled over into the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year. Request the board adopt the following budget amendment to debit DARE slash drug prevention, general fund line item fifty-one-hundred dot fifty-one-hundred, an amount of two thousand five hundred dollars, and to credit fund balance appropriated, general fund line item thirty-nine-ninety, an amount of two thousand five hundred dollars.
Do I hear a motion that we adopt the two thousand and five hundred dollar budget amendment for the DARE program, on the pocket change?
Say it.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Item number four, the Sheriff's Office can receive money each year from the federal drug fund. At the end of each fiscal year, any remaining monies must be carried forward to the next budget year. To be in compliance with federal regulations, we need to move the remaining money from, uh, to twenty-one, twenty-two. Request the board approve the following amendment to debit federal drug fund, general fund line item fifty-one-hundred dot fifty-seven-oh-two, an amount of twelve thousand eight hundred fifty-four dollars and forty-seven cents, and to credit fund balance appropriated, general fund line item thirty-nine-ninety, an amount of twelve thousand eight hundred fifty-four dollars and forty-seven cents.
I hear a motion to approve.
Say it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number five, the Sheriff's Office receives money each year from the proceeds of the state unauthorized substance excise tax. At the end of each fiscal year, the remaining monies must be carried forward to the next budget year. To be in compliance with state regulations, we need to move the remaining money to fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. Request the board adopt the following budget amendment to debit state fund drug fund expense, general fund line item fifty-one-hundred dot fifty-seven-oh-three, an amount of thirty-two thousand nine hundred and ninety-two dollars and sixty... Item number five, the Sheriff's Office receives money each year from the proceeds of the state unauthorized substance excise tax. At the end of each fiscal year, the remaining monies must be carried forward to the next budget year. To be in compliance with state regulations, we need to move the remaining money to fiscal year '21-'22. Request the board adopt the following budget amendment to debit state fund drug fund expense, General Fund Line Item 5100 dot 5703, in an amount of $32,992.60. And to credit fund balance appropriated, General Fund Line Item 3990, for $32,992.60.
I hear a motion to approve.
Second.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Item number six, the Sheriff's Department received the North Carolina Department of Public Safety Governor's Crime Commission Grant in 2021. To finish out the grant, the remaining money will need to be rolled over into the '21-'22 fiscal year budget. Request the board adopt the following budget amendment to debit Crime Control Grant, General Fund Line Item 5100 dot 7420, uh, in the tune of $12,721.80. And to credit Governor's Crime Commission Grant, General Fund Line Item 3615, for $12,721.80.
Do I hear a motion to adopt?
Second.
And a second has come on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. Last item I have for your consideration, the E-911 Department has received permission to pay a portion of radio communication upgrades out of E-911 funds. These funds will come out of the E-911 fund balance. Request the board to adopt the following budget amendment to debit capital equipment. This is E-911 Fund 22, uh, Line Item 6,600 dot 7430, in an amount of $46,700. And to credit emergency telephone system fund balance appropriated, E-911 Fund 22, Line Item 3990, in an amount of $46,700.
Do I hear a motion to adopt this budget amendment?
Second.
All right, do I hear a second? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, board. That's all I have for this meeting. Uh, I set the bar high for the next one, see what we can do. Thank you.
I will say that they're doing a good job on picking the radios. Kenwood is, you know, I'm a ham operator and go to a lot of meetings, and that's what everybody recommends, is the Kenwood radios. All right. All right, our county attorney report, Michelle Hoare, do you have anything?
I have one thing for the board. Um, the board may or may not be aware that the attorney for the Department of Social Services resigned effective June 30th, um, of this year. Um, by statute, the Board of County Commissioners, um, fulfills that position. Um, DSS needs to have an attorney so that there's no issues with their funding, uh, so they need to have an attorney effective July 1st. So, I'm asking the board to designate me as special county attorney for social service matters effective 1st of July of 2021, until such time as another attorney is appointed.
All right. Do I hear a motion to appoint Michelle Hoare for the DSS attorney?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that's the only thing I have for the board's consideration, unless the board has questions about anything, but I think we've covered everything else on the agenda.
All right. We'll move along. We didn't have any staff reports or requests. 3.6, closed session, don't have any for that. And Cindy told us a lot about our upcoming meetings and informational items, and, uh, let's see, Cindy, do we have a meeting that is canceled?
Yeah, July the 19th, which is next month.
Yep.
That meeting is canceled.
All right.
We do need to do approval of the minutes.
And then we have 3.10, upcoming minutes.
Okay.
We done that, we got to approve the minutes.
Yeah, we need to approve the minutes and then, uh, adopt the agenda consent items.
Okay.
Okay? So, let's do the approval of it.
All right. Everyone's had the minutes to read. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes for, tell me what dates, because I, I didn't...
April 29th, 2021 budget workshop, and then the June 7th, 2021 regular meeting.
Okay.
Need to approve.
Do I hear, all right, a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we have our agenda consent items, we've been able to look over them, and, uh, do I hear a motion? No, no, we don't have a motion. You'll have to excuse me on that. We'll adopt it by consent.
Yes, and we, our next monthly meeting will be August the 2nd.
All right.
We have two meetings in August, August the 2nd, August the 16th.
All right.
There's the possibility that we'll cancel that August 16th, because all others will be, uh, will be gone Wednesday through Saturday to a conference, so there's a possibility that we'll cancel that. And then the September meeting, the first one, uh, we always have it, the Tuesday after the Labor Day holiday, which is the 7th.
I'm sure that Cindy will be sending us reminders.
Oh, I know.
And that's great. All right, 3.11, if nothing else, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, we'll go home.
There you go. Out of work.
We thanked the reporter for being with us today. He did a good job in the paper. Thank you. Last thing we had, and we thank you for that.